All right, good evening. Welcome to the March 14th School Board Meeting. Could we stand and say the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. And I'm going to call the meeting to order, the regular board meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Here.
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 All right. All right, any community input at this time? All right. Seeing none. The consent agenda. A motion to approve the minutes.
Well, I move to approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2016 regular meeting, the February 10th, 2016 special and executive session, the February 15th, 2016 special meeting, the February 16th, excuse me, February 17th, 2016 special and executive session, the February 18th, 2016 special and executive session meeting, and the February 29th, 2016 special and executive session meeting.
Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016.
Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016.
Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second. Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second. Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second. Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second.
Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second. Move to second and all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second. Move to second and all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions?
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $2,711,048.80 for the month of February 2016 and the treasurer's report from February 2016. Second. Move to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? A motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
And now on to our presentation.
We will be introducing to you the names of 10 seniors who have participated in the youth apprenticeship program. Unfortunately, because it is a work program, some of them are working this evening and are unable to be with us. But what I will do is introduce the student, their, the name of their employer, and their employer's contact person, the mentor who works with them at their place of employment. And I would like at that time the students and their mentors pleased to come forward. Starting with agriculture, Landon Flick, employed at Lake Mills Golf Club. Mentor is Randy Koala. Also in agriculture, Carly Kroll. The employer is Kroll Farm. The mentor is Cindy Kroll Beggeman. She's working. In agriculture, Victor Mickel. Mickel Farm. The mentor is Mark Mickel. In agriculture, Megan Walsh. Jason Acres Incorporated. Mentor Jason Unce. In construction, Alex Mirendorf. I understand he's working this evening also. Employed at Service Specialists. And his mentor is Jeffrey Allerman. In finance, Taylor Hosey. Employed at Chapter Two Incorporated. Mentor is Amanda Sanderfoot. Also in finance, Jack Thomas. Employed at AKT Business Services. His mentor is Vicky Ritchie. But tonight we have Bill Ritchie and Andy Barnes here with him. In health services, Brandon Baloo is employed at Subway. And his mentor is Stephanie Marshall. And he's working this evening. Also in health services, Cara Howard. She is employed at Jefferson Memory Care. And her mentor is Hillary Holman. And lastly, in health services, Magwalida Roca Ayela is employed at Willowbrook. And her mentor is Gail Cartwright. Those are the 10 seniors who have participated in youth apprenticeship this year.
We would like all the students and their mentors to please meet out in the hall because the newspaper liked to get a picture of you before you leave. But I also would like to say thank you to Mr. Sanders. He has been a big supporter all these years. I can't tell you how many times I've got his signatures on things. So I would again like to say thank you Dean for all your support. And for all of you school board members, thank you too. We have a little gift for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations to all the participants, too. This is a great program. All right, Ms. Nicholson, where are you? Oh, there you are.
Good evening. I don't often take the opportunity during my board reports to go over some of the accomplishments that we do outside, our students do outside of the classroom. So I'd like to run through a couple of those this spring as we've been wrapping up a couple of different contests. Our students do very well. And so I think it's important that they are recognized for some of the things that they do. So we have it for Dane County, something called the Ahara State Writing Contest. Hundreds of students enter this contest. They write a variety of things, from short stories to poems. And we had actually two 5th graders make the top 10 this year. And they'll be honored in a ceremony in April. Olivia Olson and Kaylee Dolwick were our two 5th graders that made the top 10 in that contest. Our new 8th grade ma, or 8th grade language arts teacher who used to be in 5th grade, Caitlin Malarki and Ethan Flirkey have been working with students on Battle of the Books. Dean often participated with me with Battle of the Books that Mrs. Griffey did in the library. But this is like the statewide Battle of the Books. They had over 20, or they had 20 books they had to read in two months. And a lot of the titles we didn't even have. So they had to go research them, share them, check them out at the library. And then we had 36 kids that participated in groups of four from our school. They battled it out. And a group of four 6th graders went to place 10th out of 147 teams in the state. That was Zoe Van Gilder, Trevor Freertag, Caitlin Tuesme, and Justice Griffey. So they did a really nice job. In our math meet, we hosted for the second year, schools host for two years in a row. All of our teams made it to state in math meet, 5, 6, 7, and 8. And it was nice to see there's, we have pretty good participation. A lot of schools happen to be a little imbalanced with more boys than girls participating. And we happen to be the opposite with our 7th and 8th gr, or our 5th and 6th grade team, pretty, pretty equally represented. Youth Art Mo, Youth Art Month. Every year they design a giant flag with 16 different flags that students have drawn on it. Miniature flags, so one flag is made up of 16. Thousand, a thousand entries this year to be placed on that flag. And Ellie Evenson was one of those students. And Yadi Pineda was runner-up for having her flag placed on the, on the design. And we also had three state participants in the Youth Art Month. That was activities that were held at the state capitol this weekend, Maggie Polzin, Vivian Guerrero, and Isabel Pita. And then, of course, we had solo and ensemble. Lots of kids participated. We had 11 Class B solos get first, or Class B ensembles or solos get first. And then we also had Stacy Dressel get a start, starred first in her oboe solo, and she will be going to state. So I just wanted to recognize all those kids and all the different things that they're doing. They're very well-rounded students, and they do a great job. And that's all I have to report on this month.
Questions? Thank you. Mrs. Silverood.
Sorry, sitting further back than I usually do. Good evening. Today I spent time with the district assessment coordinators around the state. And we look to be right on track with our district assessments that we need to take. Right when students come back from spring break, we will be starting the forward exam in 3rd and 4th grade. And I think that that's a good time to do it because about half the state is, polling today, about half the state's doing it right away and half the state's doing it later. So we're going to get to see how that works. Then, starting April 18th through 21st, the 6th and 7th graders will be taking the forward exam. Then the 22nd through the 27th, the 10th graders have to take the forward exam for just social studies. And then the 28th and 29th, the ACT Aspire is given for 9th and 10th graders. Then May 2nd through 9th, the 5th and the 8th graders will be taking the forward exam. So we have to spread it out because it's a computerized test. So we're having only one grade level test at a time this year. After that, we will be doing all the makeups. We have map testing, Ames Web Testing, and we have to do the Spring Pals assessments. So lots of assessments coming up for kids. And then I just wanted to mention that in the following, within this month, you're going to be getting an email from me with the science curriculum map and the art curriculum map because they will be presented at the next board meeting. Any questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening. At the elementary school, we are celebrating the community of readers that are developing all around us. This past month, Mrs. Dahl and Mrs. Nichols have gone way above and beyond to put together lots of special events for our students. We've had two guest authors come to visit our students, lots of Dr. Seuss characters. Piggy and Elephant made a visit to our kindergarten and first graders. Our kids were involved in a reading challenge, and they were able to place hats upon my head, including a hockey helmet. The 2nd graders performed Green Eggs and Ham, and our staff did a flash mob with original lyrics for the song that Ms. Nichols wrote for us. The second thing I wanted to share with you is spring is in the air, and we're thinking gardening at this time. Our students are going to begin planting seeds in April. We are going to be asking community members to help us build some garden beds across Prospect Street. And then we're going to have our students plant plants in the beds. And then our summer school class will take care of the garden. And in August, we'll have volunteers come to help with either maintaining or harvesting some of the plants. And then when we return in the fall, hopefully we'll have a feast on our hands that students will be able to analyze the seeds. First graders do that. But then also to be able to eat some of the vegetables and fruits coming out of the garden. So a lot in the works with our garden. And then finally, the action plan for our communications plan. I gave you a copy, which might be small to read. I will also email it to you so you can zoom in to see more of the specifics. David Voss continues to work alongside of us. We are looking closely at a couple of options for a new website platform. We are looking at our notification system, which will go hand-in-hand with the website. So depending on which way we go with the website, we'll determine which way we go with our notification system. We've also decided to use Peachjar as a platform for our newsletters that will be going out to families. So instead of clicking on attachments that you receive from the school, it will come in the body of the email. So we think that will give a really nice user-friendly view for the emails that are going out. And then finally, we are working on branding for the district and also at the elementary school. So there's a lot in the works happening with the deadline of July 1st to have it all wrapped up. Thank you.
I have a question. On this communication plan, our new webpage that you list here, is that the fourth thing down there? One, two, three, four? Is that the webpage, our new webpage? Our new district webpage?
Correct.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. There will be a new webpage in place by August 1st. Is that what you're saying?
That's what we're, yep.
Okay. And my next one relates to the one down below and the due date. By August 1st, we will have in place a new emergency alert notification system.
Correct.
Okay, and they'll be both up and running?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Stradeeb.
Good evening. Let's see here. I'm excited to announce that the next, probably in April, the budget changes will be brought forward to the board. We're anticipating a balanced budget to the end of the year, with the exception of the transfer that wasn't done last year that we discussed in the past. Along with that, we have a very, very preliminary budget done for next year that we may or may not bring forward at that time, just to, you know, have an example of it for you. There's also going to be a line of credit resolution in the packet that, to approve tonight. I know we did it early in the year, but the Bank of Lake Mills wanted to see some revisions in the wording of it. So that's the reason why we're doing that again. And going forward, that'll be good for every year that we approve that. So we have to do it from year to year. You can't just do it once. So I met with Kevin Miller with M3 today. Talked about insurances and increases and that type of thing for the year. Everything is status quo except for Workman's Comp, which unfortunately is going to go by about $10,000 for next year, which is quite substantial. So we have to look at that for budget purposes. And this week I'll be attending the Wasbourn Conference, Tuesday, Tuesday at Baird Workshop, then Wednesday, Thursday in Madison. And I'm going to leave the Miss Lake Park project for the finance committee. And we'll talk about that when she brings that forward. So that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Yes, I have one. Did they say why the Workers' Comp was going to go up that much?
Other than the fact that there's some changes with the state that everyone's taken that bite. So it's not like it's something we did. We actually are very low, actually, on, on our claims. So you said that's good, but it still doesn't negate the increase that's going to happen, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Questions? All right, Mr. Sanders.
I'm going to start off tonight by having Mr. Douglas and Ms. Lehman give a little presentation on the elementary school and where we are and what, what's happening. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to the two of you. Or just you, I don't know.
Pam, can you turn the lights down a little bit? Great.
Great, thank you. So Dean said I could have 30 minutes. Greg said I could have 30 slides. I'm going to stick with the 30 minutes, but I have 70 slides. So I'm going to flip through some really quick just because they're really cool slides, and I just wanted you to see them. So you got, Rick started off and basically said what your mission statement is, which is, "By providing an outstanding education, the Lake Mills Area School District inspires our students to be responsible citizens with integrity and lifelong learners in an ever-changing world." And that, that mission statement was the heart of the elementary school. So real quickly, why was a new school needed? Safety, health concerns, welcoming environments, to make the school more efficient, to teach the students about environmental education, connecting them to the real world, and basically everything else about your mission statement. Most importantly, I think the staff and the administration, school board, recognized the need to create a 21st century learning environment. And there's lots of things that go into a 21st century learning environment. And if you really want to see it, you should go see Amanda and the school. The first thing we did was surveyed the community to understand what was important to the community. And oddly enough, I'm showing these slides for a couple of reasons. Maintaining and replacing the HVAC system, the energy efficiency of buildings, providing natural daylight, maintaining school facilities. And you all see they ranked very highly. As we continue downward, we said classrooms for flexibility, providing a large space for multiple uses, providing adequate outdoor student activities. And then green building was ranked ultra-low. The funny part is, is all of the things that I starred, those are all green building. So one of the lessons I think we learned was we all have a different definition of sustainability. So the project drivers, first was academic excellence. The next was relationship with the community, cost-effective, practical solution, improving security and safety, sustainability, and then the overall environmental and the aesthetics of the school. So as we started to integrate features and systems and equipment into the school, under Greg's leadership, we always had to compare those features back to the drivers to see if they added value. The green boxes indicate where it added value. The red boxes indicate where it actually detracted value. And from there, we were able to pick and choose the systems and the features that most supported the drivers. So basically, the definition of a green school is one that creates healthy environments that is conducive to learning while saving energy, resources, and money. So the Lake Mills Elementary School, we got this harebrained idea that actually, it started with Donna. And she asked us in the interview, Greg, you remember this, "How are you going to make the new elementary school greener than the middle school?", which was the first school in the world to achieve LEED Platinum. Or she said, "Can you do it?" And I said, "Hell yeah." I had no clue how we were going to do it, but, but I will tell you that. So under the leadership of Dean and Rick and Bob and Amanda, they supported us to, to do this wild and crazy idea, which was to pilot LEED V4, which it was the only K-12 school of the 122 projects worldwide to pilot this program. The goal, by the way, was LEED Silver. I think I said everything else. So overall, it's a 93,284 square foot, two-story new K-12 school, which is now at full capacity? Close?
Little room to spare.
Little room to spare. Good. It was important that we located it on the existing site in the middle of the residential neighborhood. There are now 123 parking stalls. We've converted a lot of what was hardscape back into native, native or adaptive vegetation, so we don't need to irrigate the site. There's still lots of space for activities and outdoor, outdoor learning spaces, as well as activity spaces. And this was just a picture of the day that we broke ground. The kids.
World's largest sandbox.
Yeah, world's largest sandbox. I think Amanda became a facility manager that day, or that whole school year, and swept the floors every day. One of the things I want to, to tell everyone, and I think most of you know, is that this school was awarded the green ribbon by the U.S. Department of Public Instruction or U.S. Department of Education. And that's a big deal. There are not that many schools that achieve this high level. And, and it's not just about sustainability. Pillar one is about reducing the environmental impact. But you'll see what the rest of the pillars are. So when we start to look and compare the middle school to the elementary school, when we, when we did the middle school back in 2007 and '08, we used LEED for, LEED for Schools 2007, which at that time, the energy code was ASHRAE 90.1, but it was Standard 2004. And so when we did LEED V4, we had to use the ASHRAE Standard 2010, which has about a 35% energy increase. So that's a big, huge difference. And frankly, it's, it has scared a lot of people. The good news is, is as we were planning for this, and you go back to one of your drivers, drivers, which was to increase energy efficiency, we had a goal of, of reducing the energy from baseline or code down 50%, which is a huge deal. Our goal was to save the district annually $77,600. Again, big deal. It employs teachers, it gets programs, buys books. The actual energy performance today is 65%. So we are doing 15% better than what we had intended. So right now, we're saving the district 91, or the school is saving the district 91,600. So that's gas and electricity. So it's a huge savings for the community. This is just for those of you that don't get on the roof and you never will. Probably has to do with workman's comp, right? There are, there's a 10 KW photovoltaic system on the roof. And then way over, I don't know how to work this, way over on the fire roof is a like 1.7 KW solar thermal hot water system. So it preheats the water to save electricity. The 10 KW photovoltaic system provides enough energy every day to run all the computers in the entire school. So that's, that's a big deal. It's kind of a, it's a teaching tool for the school. The second pillar was improved health and wellness. And this is where I think we found the statistics to be absolutely amazing. And, and I say amazing to a point where Rick Fedrizzi, who's the founder and the CEO of USGBC, is using this school's case study, this presentation, as his opening keynote address at the Green Schools National Conference this April. And that's a really, really big deal. So what's changed? We talked a little bit about collaborative environments, transparency, and daylighting. The school is so naturally daylight, it's really a wonderful space. Safety, accessibility, welcoming, seamless technology, flexibility, adaptability. And I'm just going to flip through a lot of the before and afters. So for those of you who had never been to the old elementary school, and by the way, Rick was a first grader.
First, yeah.
In that school. When it opened.
It was a couple of years ago.
Holy buckets. We got a whole board of them. So I'm just going to flip, I'm going to flip this.
I went later, but I went there.
Really quick, okay? So before and afters. So when we first started this school, does everyone remember the Sandy Hook shootings out on the East Coast? So all of a sudden, safety and security rose to the top. And that became a critical, a more critical issue than what we had anticipated. So you can see where all the red is. That's pretty much where all the security and safety is built in. So there's layers and layers of security and safety. Seamless technology. And then flexibility. And this also goes to cost savings. So all the new furniture and in the very cool bouncy seats and activity seats and the stuff, the budget had not planned for any new furniture fixtures. Everything was supposed to come over. But literally because they started talking about flexibility, and I say they, Greg and the design team, they wanted this school configured, because who knows in 20, 40, 60 years from now, how education will be taught. They wanted to be able to make all those spaces. They're just drywall and metal stud walls. They're not the concrete block load-bearing walls. So this whole school can be reconfigured for a much less price than what they could have. And it also saved a lot of cost initially because we were able to go with a different So you can see where all the load-bearing areas are, and that's, that's really important. So how's it working? And, and this is the piece that I guess I found most fascinating. The teachers were actually the driving force. They actually designed this school. Amanda had picked five different teachers to be part of the original committee. And they got to map out what 21st century learning meant for them. So I'm going to show you, you'll, you'll see the time change in the corner and you'll see where every space is being used. So the point of, of showing this is there's virtually no wasted space in this school. Every square inch of this school is used on a regular basis. So we, we did get some video of different students and staff and administration, school board members, talking about the process. And if you haven't seen it, is it on your website? Yeah, check out Amanda's website before it changes. But the students are more engaged, increased student choice. It's a behavioral thing. Kids are much more behaved, which is a really important thing. Team teaching and team collaboration has really increased. And I'm looking at Amanda because they're the ones that are telling us this evidence. Learning in just different places than what you would traditionally think where learning needs to occur in a school. I think a lot of the favorite spaces of kids are underneath the stairs, which is a great space. Small group and collaboration spaces, which is a big part of the 21st century learning model. And then student, increased student and teacher pride. Sustainability awareness has also increased a lot. I know one of the things that I've worked on with Amanda and her team was getting some outside organizations to come in and help them integrate 10 hours of environmental education into their curriculum. And the Wisconsin Teaching Standards does not require environmental education, specific hours, 10 hours. So that was, that was just something very interesting, I guess, as a contractor I've never done. And it was really fun to be able to find, to create the entire school as a teaching tool, and then be able to have the students actually have hands-on learning opportunities within the school. So the third pillar is effective environmental education. And again, that's the third pillar of the greens, the green ribbon. And so this is the first school in the country to have 100% of their teachers at that time earn their green classroom professional certificate. And they brought up a lot of really great issues, things that as design and construction professionals, we don't think about, like what kind of pets can we have in the classroom? What kind of glade plugins or air fresheners can we have? What kind of, oh yeah, dry erase markers, plants, air purifying plants, which are safe for kids, which are toxic? So the teachers asked a lot of really great questions. And we think that throughout this entire collaboration, the results are increased test scores. So you're going to see many of the test scores, and yes, we actually benchmarked this because this was something we learned on the middle school, is if you don't benchmark or measure where you're at, how do you measure if, if the building was a success? How did we accomplish the drivers and the goals? So you can kind of see how testing went for fourth graders. And that's, the green is science, and then the top is social science. So this is math and reading. And you can see that there's an increase in both of those. And then if I'm saying something wrong, let me know. So this is reading growth for second, third, and fourth graders. Math and reading. And the average sick days per student, this is one of probably the more impressive statistics, declined significantly. And that's a huge piece of sustainability and having really good indoor air quality. And crazy enough, they mapped out every single type of sickness that happened in the school, everything from strep throat to chicken pox. And you can see the huge decline in every single one of those. And I think a lot of it has to do with the air changes. There's a lot more fresh air coming into the school. And then the quality of the materials, there aren't carcinogens and hazardous materials or chemicals in those building materials or in the furniture. So that made a huge difference. Overall, there was a 75% reduction in recorded allergy and asthma rates, which the school nurse has to record everything that happens at school during the day. And that's a huge decline, absolutely huge. And then overall, again, a 15% reduction in absenteeism. So what did we learn? Well, we learned that in the middle school that was seeking LEED under LEED 2007, or I guess it would LEED for School 2007, the school achieved Platinum, which under the rating system that we had used for the middle school, or the, the elementary school, LEED V4, would have only gotten the school Silver. So at the time, that's why you saw the goal originally of we said, okay, we're going to, the goal is Silver, because that was equivalent to Platinum. Today, this project right now sits teeter-tottering on Gold and Platinum. And it did not cost the school any additional money to go from a Silver level up to that Gold/Platinum level. Couple of other big things we learned is that change is okay. It's scary, but it's okay. Designing is a collaborative process, and it's not just with the design professionals. It needs to be with the occupants and the users of the facility. New space requires staff, administration to be committed to using that space as intended. So you can't leave the staff out, design it for them, and then expect the process to work. We're not teachers. We don't know how to teach 21st century classrooms. So having their involvement was really huge. We learned that every district is unique. The elementary school within Lake Mills is unique from the middle school, as the high school is unique from both of those schools. And there's continued room for the improvement in the design process overall. So this is a picture of Dean. And then when we went to Washington DC, it was Rick and Bob, Dean and myself. And one of the things that the Secretary of the Department of Education said was, "All of us have a critical role to play in making our schools safe, healthy, welcoming environments for our kids, to make schools more efficient, to teach kids about the environment, to connect them to the real world. This, to me, is the ultimate triumph of common sense." But I can tell you that common sense isn't so common. So questions?
So when will we know if we are Platinum or Gold?
I was really, really hoping to know Friday. And then I was really, really hoping to know today, and that didn't happen. I can tell you three things, though. One is that we should have a decision by tomorrow. I have a conference call with them tomorrow. If I don't get the answers I need, I will be in Chicago on Friday, because they have a meeting in Chicago on Friday. So I, really soon. There was a couple of roadblocks in the way, but I think I've worked past those. I guess two other announcements is, one, so I talked to you a little bit about the green schools, the National Green Schools presentation, and your project is the case study for, for that entire conference, which is really cool. The second thing is, and I'm just going to grab these. So the book that's being passed out to administration and the school board is a book, it's called Green Think, written by Rick Fedrizzi, again, the founder of the U.S. Green Building Council, who created the LEED rating system. And there are nine pages written about Lake Mills in this book. And there are no other pages that long written about any other project in this book. So that's pretty cool. I can't remember what page.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, thank you. Did I mark yours?
No.
You just scanned it. So that, that is something that's really impressive in that the community and the district should be really, really proud of. Rick has been, Rick created the U.S. Green Building Council in LEED in the late 1990s. And for this to be one of his very top favorite projects is really, really impressive. And I say that because his second favorite project was another project I did, and that was a zero net energy, carbon positive building. So that's really impressive, that, that this project is his favorite. The third and final thing, I guess, that we want to announce is that the Lake Mills Elementary School has been awarded ENR, which is Engineering News Record. It's the industry trade publication. It was awarded the national best of the best of 2016. So projects had to be completed in 2014 or 2015 in order to be eligible to receive this award. To give you a really good understanding for this, the, the best of the best K through 12 project in the country. So this project actually will now, now go on to compete with, with the best of the best worldwide. Just keep our fingers crossed. Dean and myself and Greg and our design partner, EUA, will be going to New York to accept this award in April.
Early April.
Early April. So we better have the LEED certification by then. And, and just to give you a better perspective, have all of you seen pictures of the new World Trade Center? That was the best commercial project. So this project beat out a lot of other school projects. A lot, big schools.
It was on 60 Minutes last night.
Pardon?
That man was on 60 Minutes last night that did the World Trade Center, the new building.
When are we appearing on 60 Minutes? Right?
On 60 Seconds.
Yeah. So I guess my 30 minutes is probably up.
Do you want a quick thing?
Oh, okay.
So I know Teresa came here to talk about the plaque. I thought it makes sense really to talk about the project instead of the plaque and kind of how well it's performed. So what Teresa's done, as we've all asked, she's been shaping the LEED V4 process. It's not even fully written yet. It's not fully adopted, so.
It's not released till October of this coming up.
So October of this year is when the rest of the world gets to submit their projects under this rating system. So every credit, Teresa works with the team that's writing the credit, the technical team. So it's just an army of scientists just poring through all the data of Lake Mills to validate, does it meet it, does it not? She adjusts the calculators, she's written a lot of the forms, a lot of the information had never even been submitted before. So that's why it's taken so long, because we're the, again, the beta testers shaping the, the standards. And right now, it, it really should be a LEED Silver, maybe a Gold. The fact that just through pure, pure effort, Teresa's gotten this maybe to Platinum. If, if we come back with Platinum, I'll be impressed. I'm expecting Gold. I really am. Because I've been through the process long enough to know what it means to get every additional credit and points. So I, I can tell you that nobody's worked, okay, I know. She is, I tell you what, if we sent her to the Middle East for a week, we would have peace in the Middle East. I know she could negotiate that. So anyway, I, I want to thank Teresa personally for just two years of steady work on this. And I apologize, we don't have a plaque. I don't know what color it's going to be, but I can guarantee you that whatever we get, we couldn't have gotten another outside of it without her effort. So I want to thank her for that.
And Donna?
Thank you.
It is greener. And thank you for your patience.
No, we thank you. It's, it's been incredible journey. And the relationship between you guys, Myron and EUA, has been seamless and has been incredible all the way through. I don't think we could have asked for anything better, the way it, it not only came out, but the way we progressed to that point. So thank you.
It's been crazy. Yes, you can. It's on Amazon. You can order it on Amazon.
Green Think.
It's called Green Think. Okay.
Your report and your thing tonight, would that be available on our school website? The reason I'm asking is because my parents, district in Kansas, are looking to do the same things that we've done here, because I'm trying to get them to move by me some of that, which is selfish. One, I love them here. Two, because I want them here.
Sure.
My niece's school has literally been here, and she does have a lot of stuff. And the elementary upstairs, the video of the school, so that they have to find it. Yeah, but I wanted like all our awards.
Oh, I can give you a list of awards as well. Can I send them to Amanda and then you get them from Amanda?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Dean is, or Amanda, is this okay to put on your website if I get you the presentation?
I think parents and districts.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sanders? Organization and meeting date?
I'll thank the, I just want to thank the representatives from Myron, too. They've been good partners. And I realize how many hours Teresa's put into this thing. And if we were going to get Platinum, it's because she's, she's done it for us, so. The one that I have on, the first one that I have on my reports is the, talk about the land on the south side of town that we own. There's a lot of things that go with this. It's as big a crossword, jigsaw, whatever kind of puzzle you can put together. We were approached by the city probably three weeks ago now, asking if we would be willing to sell the land that we have in the south. asking if we would be willing to sell the land that we have in the south side of town, because they have a business that is coming to town and would like to buy that piece of property. We own a little over 36 acres out there. The land was purchased by the district. I wished I could tell you exactly the year. I think it was 1997, to be honest with you, or 99, from two families. Part of, one of the pieces of the property was also donated by one of the families out in that area. The provisions in the agreement, when the district purchased the land, did also say, and I appreciate this greatly, the family wanted a school on that property, or something with educational value, not a company. So the family has the opportunity that if we do anything with it other than educational buildings, softball fields, football, whatever, that they have the right to take, to buy back the piece that we bought from them and the donation, to take back, and this and that. So for us to say, "We're willing to look to sell this to the city," we then still have to work with the family to do with that. The other thing, and I've said this since the beginning, I haven't said it out loud here, but Mr. Wilkie from the city and the family has heard this. I'm not going to do anything that's gonna landlock this district. Because I truly believe, as our growth has shown, we may be looking at another school somewhere down the line. And we need to have some land to look to other than looking to it 20 years from now when you need it, and the price of it goes up a little bit, because people know you need it. And that happens in a lot of towns. So, we've talked about, what are some other possibilities in town? We're still looking at some of those. There is land out on the south side of town, both on the farm that's there, maybe, and on another piece. I have asked Mr. Douglas and our representative, Mr. Dufick from EUA, to look at all of the drawings from out there, which I think he has with him tonight. I've also have contacted a commercial appraiser to come out and say, you know, "What is the land worth?" We have an offer from the city, from the land, but I'm not gonna think about making that public till we get to the point that we know what it's worth, and where we're at. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that need to fall in place. The city needs this to fall in place by June 1, which puts a lot of pressure and a lot of short timeline on all of the things that we do. But the bottom line is, you as a board can sell that property, which it wasn't that way in the past. But under the new Act 55 that just went in a couple of years ago, you can sell. But you can't buy another piece unless you go to annual meeting. So whatever we do, you will make the decision on selling. The district will make the decision on buying. So we could sell, and the district tells us no on buying, and we're back to being landlocked. But my thought is this. I'm not gonna spend a lot more time working on this thing and not going a lot forward if the five of you tell me you're not gonna sell it. To me, that's probably hanging the city out to dry, that's hanging us out. So I guess my thing tonight is, I need to know if you want us to continue to move forward and look into the negotiations, to do the appraisal, to look at some other pieces of land, to get it forward, you know, ready to go to another annual meeting when we're looking at another piece of land. Because it, I mean, in fairness to the city, if we do all this work, and all of a sudden comes back for a vote, and the vote says no, the city could have moved to a different piece of property, could have done something different. I don't want to hold up either one of us. So my question tonight, and it's a head vote more of a thing, because you're not voting on, because we're not selling it yet. We're just looking to put our ducks in a row. Are you all right with the district moving forward and continuing to look at trying to sell this piece of property?
I think you need to tell the board a little, give the board a little bit more information. We can't tell who the, who the potential buyer is, but you can tell a little bit about, in terms of the jobs and things that'll bring into the...
The company that's coming in, as much as we've been told by the city, is a printing business. A lot of the jobs there will be with, a lot of the work done with robotics, but then people are gonna need to be able to program the robotics. So what I understand is a higher-end jobs. They're not, it's not a minimum wage facility. They will, would look to put a huge building, and the figures escaped me at this point in time, on the property. With that, then the city will finish CP Avenue going out, down on Savenu. They will finish the sidewalks, the sewer, the water, the electricity, all the things that go with this building. It will then be put into the TID district that's out there, understanding we get no tax dollars off it now. So if you sell it, you would at least get the tax dollars that were on it back in the day when we bought it. But it would be an exchange, because if we take another piece of property off the rolls, we don't, they quit paying property tax. So the taxes part of that is almost a wash. But it is a printing business. As much, and beyond that, I can't really tell you, because it hasn't been let out. The competition for this business is between us and another town. And again, if they can't start building by June 1, I know that they will look to move to the other town. It would, again, then bring sewer water and things to that area out there. But a lot of that, again, is from the city. Our way is, that's about as much as they can tell us. They can't really make it real public, because they're in competition with another city.
Do we know approximately how many jobs? That's what I was gonna ask.
I don't know.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, there.
They give you, wait a minute. To give you an idea of the size of the company, 10 acres under one roof. 10 acres under one roof. That's huge. The old CP building is seven, I believe, under one roof. So it's bigger than that.
So why that particular place? What are the reasons behind that?
Because that's the piece that the company wants, and that's what I was told. You can come to the mic if you would like and help me out with that, because it's your piece of property that you're looking to get.
The, when we originally proposed to them, we proposed a site in the industrial park. They were giving us two years. For the sites in the industrial park, we have to go through an alternatives analysis, which takes about 12 months, because it has a lot of hydroic soils and wetlands on it. So when they moved this project up to June 1, we had to come up with a site that had absolutely no hydroic soils on it. And have it close enough to the existing TID that we could do a quick amendment, and that it had electric and water sewer relatively close. So when we did the analysis on the community, we actually had to meet with the DNR and go over a set of processes on the other site. And at that, going into that meeting, we ran the functional analysis on the 26 acres we own, and then we did the analysis on the land you own. And in the meeting, it became, with the DNR and the Corps of Engineers, it became clear that we couldn't meet the timeline that this company now had. And so your site became the primary site for us as a possibility. It's kind of, to the south, you have St. Paul's. To the east, you go down that hill, and you head towards what's, the wetlands that I think the Thompsons created out there. So a lot of that land just east of yours is hydroic soil, so I'm imagining it's gonna have a lot of wetlands on it. So you would be landlocked heading out that way. So this site is about the best site in this area that would meet the requirements that we had. We were asked by Dean to generate four sites for the school district. We used the exact same set of qualifications that we use to locate the site that you have. And we proposed four sites to the school district, which Craig has, that would meet the exact same qualifications as the site you currently own. The place will pay $25 an hour to, as the average wage. It has full health, life, dental, vision, retirement. And the company has expanded twice in the last two years. Once in Iowa, once in New York. They are keeping all three of their current facilities and adding on, and they plan on adding on more yet.
I hate to, sorry, I'm an MBA. So what's the strategic plan for them, like, that Lake Mills? What brings them to Lake Mills?
That's a good question. The state did a bunch of research. And Dodge, Jefferson, and Walworth and Rock are the only counties in the state of Wisconsin that have a population between 25 and 45. That's growing. And then you do the analysis of how many jobs lost in Jefferson County in the last year, and you combine those to the best job market with the right people at the right time. Their primary market, their primary suppliers are out of Milwaukee. They supply all over the world. But their suppliers for certain types of printing material are in Milwaukee.
Are any of the sites that the city has available for the school as an alternative in that general area?
Two of them are. Two of them, one's on the east side, one's on the north side, but two of them are in the same general areas as that site. And we wrote into the TID that we would assist the school district with facilities. And I think if you have your appraisal done, you'll find out that we were fair, more than fair.
Any questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for me, other than...
I have a couple of questions about, you said that you wouldn't recommend we sell anything unless we buy something. Is that...
I don't think you can landlock the district. I don't...
Now, when we bought the south site, okay, I was here then. There was an extensive study done, and I don't know if you found it or not. Were they studied at south site? They looked at what's now Brookstone out there? And that was, that was the Islandfelt Farm at that time?
Yeah, I have all that in my office.
And it was exactly what Steve said. There were water issues out there, so... And then we looked at north, they looked, well, Bob, you were here, too, I think. They looked north of the interstate, over by where Olson's. Those were the three sites. And they did extensive study, you know, they had, they looked at where's the, were they projecting growth? Growth for student population. They looked at economic development. They looked at, they had the DNR out there. They did a lot of studies. I don't know how you could find, are you, are we gonna buy a site because Dean says it's a good site to buy? Or are we gonna buy a site because we've studied the site?
Well, as I told you, I'm not doing any of the studies. I've asked people to do it, so you wouldn't buy it because Dean said it. You know, you've got...
Do we have a lot of time in Ju, this is the end of March, almost. We're talking about April and May.
Yeah.
So is that adequate time to do a thorough analysis of another site to buy?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'd be honest with you.
I don't know either, but I'm asking you that.
That's why I've put, I asked Greg and Eric to jump in. That's why I went after an appraiser. I know that Steve and the city have done, you know, the economic development. I've read that already, because you have it out to, what, 2025, if I'm not mistaken? They have done a lot of work with the DNR thing. So I think we can tap into a lot of the work that they've done. But that's why I've also asked Mr. Douglas to try to help, because I haven't bought land. I don't know how to, what, you know, the whole thing you're saying, the feasibility study, never done that. Glad to work and help with it, but I'd like, we will, if we, if you say, "Let's move forward", I want to get these professionals on board and get going.
What is the cost of that? I mean, if we hire people to do a feasibility study, number one, what would they do? And number two, what would it cost? And number three, how long will it take? I mean, it doesn't sound like there's a very, there's about an eight-week timeline. That's it.
There are some issues that you need to think about, though, since the time you bought the school. First of all, the city has a municipal boundary agreement with the town. And then we've completed a multiple comprehensive plan, and we've done utility studies. So what you considered at the time you originally bought that land are significantly different now than when you bought the land. So it's not like you could say, "Hey, this is, this land meets the same requirements we originally intended." It, it's not gonna be the same. He says that the school district be landlocked, but you have to realize that that 33 acres is landlocked. You're not building to the south anymore, and you're not building to the east, because there's wetlands all over that. So the situation is, is if you can't fit it on that acreage, which could be an issue, then you need to look at a bigger, more open site than this. And so that, those start to fall into place as to, you know, what type of people are gonna live there, and why, and who's gonna be working and who's not, and those types of things.
Where is the growth gonna be? I mean, in the city, the homes to be built, do you project?
Well, it's all in the comprehensive plan, but it falls, it falls primarily to the east and to the southwest. And basically, you take 89 and you head south. So we're looking at the Unstrust property. We're looking at the Northcrest Farm. We're looking at Trentopole. We're looking at what used to be the Hansler Farm, is now owned by Chia. So those are areas. We try not to move past Harvey Road because of the mound.
Epsom Mound?
Right. We prefer not to have that developed. If it develops, it's gonna be in the city, but we prefer to try not to let that develop. The north side, we'd like to see developed. But that's a, you know, there's a million dollars worth of water and $3 million worth of sewer. I don't think the school district is interested in putting that kind of money in. There are a lot of developers nowadays who aren't interested in putting that kind of money in. So it, the north side has some issues. And for a school, it would really be difficult, because you have to have some sort of transportation system. So you're looking at sidewalks and bike trails and all that to get them over there. I mean, we, we studied this from the time I wake up in the morning till I go to bed at night, as to how to do all these things.
Well, I think what you're saying right now is basically what we were told when we bought the property on the south side. That that, in essence, was where the city was gonna grow, and houses were gonna be built in it. I agree, you want a school where the population is, you know, so... But that was basically the story. But now I hear you say all the things that's wrong with that site, and it sounds like maybe we were sold a bill of goods, huh?
Well, you look at it from this, what you were intending to buy. At that time, 33 acres was adequate. Understand that if you're like us, the legislature's changed all the conditions, and maybe you need more than 33 acres. I know last week, there were 10 changes in the TID law. So I'm assuming that probably in public education, there've been a substantial number of changes in the last 20 years, which is probably about the time you bought that property. So as you start to look at how that land gets used, I know that in the 16 years I've been here, wetlands laws have changed. So land that you could have built on in 2000, you're not gonna build on now.
The last study that we did through both of the last architects that we had and things said, with 36 acres, we could do any school except the high school. That there's more than enough property to do any type of school except the high school. Because usually when you build a new high school, you move out there. The fields, the parking lot's bigger, the tech ed area's bigger, the gym is bigger. That, no, we couldn't put probably a high school out there, but any other school at this time could be put out there.
So what you're kind of saying is, then, if we were to look for more property, would we wanna pick a property where you could build a school, a high school, or you could build another elementary school?
Well, that's a decision we'd have to make.
You mean, like, more flexible space? Is that what you're...
No, I'm talking about, that's, I remember when this was done, they were talking about building a, either a new high school, or you could also use it to build another elementary... or you could also use it to build another elementary school. One on the north side of town and one elementary school on the south side of town.
I remember seeing that in all the readings, too.
So that was talked about, so what you're saying is that if we were to look for more property, we probably would have to look at the south side, and we'd have to look for more than thirty-six acres. And we'd have three, or whatever that amount was, I don't see it here right now, that if we sold that property, we'd have to start with. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
So, and then we'd have to do a feasibility study. I mean, you guys are in the Building and Grounds Committee, what do you say? You know this property stuff. And Bob, you were here when they bought this thing, weren't you? No?
No.
Okay. Well, there was a lot of controversy.
Yes, there was.
Yeah, I know, and I've had a lot of very in-depth conversations with the family and some of the members about the controversy and this and that, and other things. So I, like I said, it was a lot. I mean, when Steve said to me on Monday night, he said, I wanna, I wanna know if you wanna sell your property. By Friday, he almost floored me. So, but I'm not gonna move on if you don't want to. You know what I mean? It's, it's not in my power, it's not my right to do that.
Well, I, can I?
I'm only one board member. I have no problem selling the property and buying another piece of private property. I agree with you on that. I just think that the timeline, I mean, eight weeks is...
Yeah, well, that, let them work that out.
Eight weeks.
I don't, I don't think we'll be losing anything by having them at least explore the possibility.
No, I don't need that.
And, and the fact that it's too small to build a comprehensive high school on, if we should, if, if. We should build a high school in the, in the future, down the line, we need more property anyway.
So I guess my question is, has, have those, those issues with the families? I mean, are they looking to explore this?
They already have explored, and they're waiting kind of for a decision tonight to keep moving forward, just like we are.
The only problem I have is, you know, as an elementary, I have small children, and I have one who is not yet out the elementary school. And I just feel like one of the things as part of, as someone, if you're, if, if we're strictly looking for a high school, that's one thing. But if we're looking for something that could possibly be elementary or high school. I was on the facility committee for the new elementary school. The, one of the biggest things is that it's not in the community, that land out there. And now you're saying, so possibly the, our town will expand around that land. So it will be part of the community. But if we're gonna pick a spot that's further out, we're again in that position where we're not anywhere near community.
Well, we haven't even gotten to pick it.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, like, that's sort of what I'm hearing in terms of what's available and growth and everything. So that's the only thing that's like...
No, the land doesn't have to be used for a school. You said any educational purpose.
Educational purposes, it says, so school, ball fields.
We wouldn't really buy it for anything other than the intent.
No, well, and their intent was to have some kind of an educational facility on that site. Again, could've been baseball, I mean, it says it right in it. Baseball fields, softball fields, soccer fields, and a school. It says it right in the agreement.
Better luck having something if you said you're gonna buy property for a future school or you're gonna buy it for fields, getting it passed. I mean, that's what the seller said, that we could use it for anything. But we wouldn't buy something on conditions, would we? Where the seller set a bunch of conditions, I don't think so.
Anymore, you mean?
No.
No, but I think we, we did that back in your, in the day, because the sellers also donated part of that property.
That's right. That's exactly correct.
And do you think this might set a precedent for other people in the community who maybe were interested in donating in the future, that see, if this piece gets sold, that they may see that as something that if they did it, what are the chances that the school could turn around?
Yeah, I get, I get what you're saying, and I, I feel bad for the family, because I think that's been the controversy all the way along, that it was, how are they lining their pockets? When really it was, I think, if you go back and read all of the things that go with it, the family was trying to do good.
Right, yeah.
I don't think anybody thought that.
And they did it in great faith.
Discourage people in the future from...
Right. I don't know. I think, Dawn, if we've had that thing since ninety-seven and somebody wanted to do that, I would've thought they might've stepped up by now. Maybe if they know we're looking, it may be a different thing. But again, the family needs to, I mean, there's siblings involved in this thing, that they need to get together. And yeah, we've got, like Donna said, a lot of work if we were gonna even move forward with this. But this is the first time you've been together, that I could talk about it. And so I guess I'm, I'm just looking for some direction.
So what we're, what you're asking tonight is if we're willing to explore the option, like, gather more information about it?
Right, because you would still have to go to a board meeting to say, I approve the sale of this land to the city. You would still have to, as a fivesome, you still have to do that. So if you say, no, we don't even wanna go that far, that's what you say tonight, and we're done.
I think what you say is kind of important, though, because we could say, yes, sell it, and then we could go to a meeting, not wanna buy any other, you know?
Well, or you could get to it, no, they're not gonna give you the, the right to buy.
Yeah. I, I would say one thing, too, I thought of as Rachel was talking. Of the biggest controversy that I heard when this property out there was bought, was not anything, the, other than, the main thing I heard was that it isn't in the city. That I have to say that, and I didn't think of it till she said it.
And I think that came up when we built the other elementary school, you know, when we built the new school.
It did, that was one of the biggest things why we didn't move out there.
There's no, CP wasn't done, there's no water, there's no sewer, there's no sidewalk.
It's on a major highway and...
Right, but a lot of that, a lot of that might be done if this business goes out there. So, you know, who knows?
This is a environmentally, since you've got environmental people, an environmentally friendly business?
Yes, it is.
It's not gonna be built in smoke.
I was, I was listening to it, and I know someone had asked a question about that before, but we went through and asked all the questions when we interviewed them. And yes, they are very high in the environmentally friendly for, for manufacturing business.
How do they transport their product?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Truck.
Trucks, so the trucks would go through town, or?
CP Avenue.
I mean, the main corridor is the interstate.
That's why we're trying to push CP Avenue through.
So how would they go? They would go CP Avenue B to twenty-six, to the interstate?
No, 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 they would go...
Oh, no, to the interstate.
They would go CP Avenue up to V and then out to eighty-nine.
I see.
Out to McDonald's.
I see, they would take...
And when would they do that?
Pardon me?
And when would they do that? When do they transport?
Primarily at night.
Schools letting out at three-ten.
No, at night.
No, they, that was one of the questions we had, was there's a school across, there's, there's still a school across the street. And they said that they primarily transport between ten and two, in the evening.
But they could transport at any time.
Oh, it's a business.
Right.
It depends, but their primary transportation schedule is set up for that time. They are currently right in the middle of a city, right a block away from a middle school.
We don't have any existing buildings? We have a couple vacant buildings, or soon to become, that would meet their needs in town?
They, they, the first questions they asked were, well, the first question they asked was, is there a railroad? The second one is, is are there existing buildings? And we went through and examined everything, and there was, there was nothing. And so that's why we, we fell to this point. They really wanna be here, so they're going through a lot of hoops to, to make it happen. But they have a piece of equipment that's being delivered on November seventeenth. So it, it has to be in place by that date.
So they have to have their facility built before then? Okay.
Well, you know, as, as Mr. Sanders said, this is kind of a jigsaw puzzle, and there's, there's certainly a lot of moving parts. And I think that we need to be sensitive to the potential economic opportunity that the city has. And, and yet, we've got, we've got several things that, that need to be considered. One is, we, we truly can't sell that entire parcel the way that it stands. There needs to be some work there, and, and seeing if those conditions can be modified in any way. And then I think we also need to find a suitable replacement site. And those things, those things are important, and the timing isn't the greatest. But I think that I would be in favor of at least pursuing the feasibility of this sale and trying to do that in a timely fashion. And then we'd have the facts, and then it would be a much better decision to be made when we know what, what we can do and what we can't do. And likewise, if we did find a suitable site, then we need the voter approval to purchase, and, and the sequencing of that is kind of tricky. But I think it's worth a shot, and I, I wouldn't mind moving forward and, and trying to make this happen.
Okay. All right, so we'll continue.
Could I make one last comment?
Do we need to vote on that? Or do we just need to give a head nod?
It's not on there.
Just a head nod.
Okay.
So are you?
I don't think so, no.
I like data, so I'm good with gathering some more information.
More information.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have one more thing you wanna do?
Yeah, from the beginning, we've indicated that we'd like the school in the city, too, closer to the center of the city. So we've been willing to cooperate. I, I know that you've been looking at a large green parcel, and there, there isn't really any site like that in, inside the existing city. So when you look at the growth pattern of what could occur, some of the sites that we proposed are as good as your site. And so it, from that standpoint, I feel pretty good about staying with the consistency of, of trying to stay close to the core of the city.
So, did, did you say what those sites were?
I haven't, because, A, I don't really wanna put it out there, because if you're gonna try to buy it, price of, price of land just went up tomorrow.
Are there gonna be feasibility studies on anything we consider? And are we hiring someone?
Right there.
So we have to pay money to find another site?
Well, yes and no. I mean, the city has made an offer of four sites for us to look at. Mr. Douglas and Mr. Dufick will, will do a feasibility study. The appraiser will cost us between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars to come in and appraise the whole site, just to make sure the two sides are fair. I know Steve says that, but I wanna make sure we're in that same boat. I don't know what the feasibility study was, because it was like, if we're gonna do this or not, you know, how much time do I spend on it if you said no? So...
You look at student, potential student population and all of those things.
It's all there, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna, I guess I wanted to say, too, you know, for me, it's a difficult thing because of, because of the, you know, wherever this is. But I also like to keep an open mind in terms of, is this an opportunity for us as well?
Well, I think it's an opportunity for everybody.
But you know what I mean.
Yeah, I get you.
So I guess what I would propose is, and I've done a lot of site analysis, start at a really high level. I think just in the, in the nature of time, we'll take, Eric and I, we'll lock ourselves in a room with Steve. We'll look at those four sites, and I would suspect that seventy percent of the information that we need is probably in his office. And we'll come back and we'll probably, I would suggest probably a closed session. We'll, we'll talk about the potential sites, and we'll look at some very basic characteristics before we get into a whole detailed due diligence study. We'll just test basically fit. So Erica's gonna test these sites for different uses. So you'll basically be able to say it's this or this or this use. We'll test the logistics in terms of where it is. We'll test utilities and infrastructure, is usually kind of a common, what's there, what's not. And we'll be able to kind of take your existing site as one of the options, four other sites, and we'll paint a picture of where it's located, infrastructure. We'll look at some environmental concerns, hydro soils and things like that, utilities. And then we'll just step back, and if it just, it's either going to or not going to pass that first litmus test, and you're gonna say, you know what, it just feels awful, there's no use hiring a bunch of consultants and doing soil borings and everything else. So I think we'll take that first swing quickly, and maybe even April. Just go in a room, talk turkey on some of these options, paint a little bit of a picture for you, and then see how that feels, and then at that point, you can decide if this is serious or not. Does that kind of make sense, the approach? Yep.
It's gonna come a point where there's going to have to be, in my opinion, anyway, some community involvement.
Yes.
To take something to an annual meeting with just no community involvement would be not good, in my opinion.
Yeah, and, and that can be your choice, too, I've seen both ways. We did a site, to Dean's point, that I worked on a site that very open trans, totally open transparent process. The district and the community made a choice that that's the site that we want. Developer bought it the next day and sold it back to the school district for twice what they thought they were gonna buy it for. So that can happen. So I think you just have to talk about the advantages and disadvantages, and the level of engagement. That's gonna make sense. It doesn't really matter to us, there's not a right or a wrong. But I think that first step, before you even engage the community, you might find that all four of those options, when you paint a broad brush, are wonderfully fantastic or horrible. And it's not, it doesn't make sense to engage anybody at that point. So maybe just let us get our feet under us, get that first step, and see how it feels. Yep. Correct. Yep. Yes. Correct. We could. So the question was, do we look at kind of the same thing we did with the elementary school? What I would suggest is take the long-range development plan and the zoning. And really, instead of, the elementary school is looking out two or three years for that need, this is gonna be looking out ten or twenty years. So I would, I would encourage you to look at the long-term zoning development map for the area, and don't talk about where the houses necessarily are today, or even tomorrow, but where will they be ten years from now? And then position these sites in the context of the long-range plan.
I think that that's a good point, because we have already seen a lot of that. If we could bring that, the existing site into, so we can compare.
Mm-hmm.
Where's the population gonna be? Maybe it isn't there now, but that, that'll depend on the city, where they're pushing development.
The city's zoning drives a lot of those development patterns. And, and that map is, and utilities, right. And I've seen that map before, and that's, that's...
If you don't have the utilities there, I don't care what it's on, nobody's moving.
Right.
Nobody's coming.
Right. So anyway, I, I think that we would do, it's not a lot of effort, we would do that at no cost, just to kind of get there. And then we can, then we can decide, if you want to do a detailed feasibility analysis, who do you need to engage? What do you need to do for the, to narrow down from four potential sites to, to one? And then we can talk about how to take that next step, if there even is one.
I have a question for you, Mr. Wilkie, too. What was the purpose of the industrial park? Were you hoping to locate our industry out there?
Yes.
Way off there.
No, that isn't, because then why would they want our site?
Well, I can go back and go over the details if you want me to.
No, I mean, I'm just...
It, it has to do with, we had a bunch of ground that we have invested in, and we have been building on it.
Industrial.
Right, we're, we're down to three lots.
Left.
Right. The, the key issue is, is we had a lot, we thought we had two years, and through the two-year process, we could've made this happen. When they pushed that timeline up on us by ordering that piece of equipment, we, we couldn't go through the full DNR analysis process. And so we had to find a site that had a Phase One on it and that had no hydro soils. Because our conversation was with them is if there's no hydro soils on it, then it doesn't need to have a wetland study. Once, if you have any hydro soils on it, then you have to do a wetland study. And then based on the wetland study, to build any building, you have to go through what they call, avoid, minimize, and mitigate. And to go through that process, you have to do a functional analysis. So you have to look at every possible way that building can be laid out on that site and all the existing soil conditions that would be impacted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I'll call you tomorrow to set up a date, Mr. Douglas.
Do you want him here for the high school?
What?
Do you want Greg here for the high school?
No.
No, you can go. All right. The next item...
Next two I have are pretty much tied together. The reorganizational meeting after the election is usually the fourth Monday of April, which would be the twenty-fifth. And I'd like to start that at six o'clock, like we always have. It's, unless somebody has a, is teaching a class or something on that day, I can't do it. And then Cape has asked if they can do their forum afterwards again, like they did last year. And so I'm, I don't have to get asked questions, you do. So would you be all right with them setting up something for... setting up something for, after that reorganizational meeting, for questions?
You know, I wouldn't object to that, but I think I'd like to have a little more discussion about the format.
Okay.
I would, too.
Exactly how they, how they did it. It seemed a little awkward last year, to be honest.
So maybe I can invite whoever's on that committee to come to your April board meeting?
Yeah.
Which would be two weeks before that, and then you could talk about that.
Yeah, that'd be, it would be good, I think.
All right.
That we could have a little input into how, how that works.
Right.
Got it. In your packets, I had put some, another letter of looking at the administrative assistant position and the administrative position in the district office as we're moving forward. And I, I think that the one thing that we'd like, I'd like to see you to move forward is to move the secretary to full-time, so that we can move the lady over and do enrollment secretaries, and we can have somebody else do summer school. Beyond that, in the office, I guess what I'm just gonna, what I said in there is, I think we just have to understand that we need at least one more person. Beyond replacing, you know, Patty, and you've replaced me, or you will later on today, I think that we still need help, but it might be in the best interest of the district to let Mr. Deeb and Mrs. Strike, along with our auditor and Mr. Stelmacher, who's still here working, help set that up versus Mr. Sanders says, this is what we should have, and then he walks out the door. They need it to work the way they need it to work. So what I'm asking, and I know it's in there later, is let's just approve the secretary to full-time, understand that you probably need somebody else in that office, and then let them come to you later on. Mr. Stelmacher is here until July 1, and I know we'll come back if Andrew needs more help than that later on. And so it's not like this is a priority that has to be filled tomorrow. I just wanted to get you thinking about it, and to get people to understand that after all the analysis, we probably need more help in the business office. The next one is conference realignment, which I know that everybody here always loves a lot, so I'm gonna stay real quiet and short. You were given a letter that was the same letter that I was given from the Waterloo School District, looking to try to get out of the Capitol Conference for reasons that were outlined in there. We, the administrations, the principals, ADs, and superintendents from every school in the conference are getting together this Wednesday to discuss this or other options, if I can say it that way. And I'll report back to you where we go, but I just thought, since it was sent to the board and of the WIA, and it was about our conference, you should see it, and we can move from there. OPEB meeting, I didn't put it on the agenda because I hadn't gotten the cash flow and all of the other things last week. Well, about 3:00 today, they showed up. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna give you a copy of the two things that came through my office today. There's a second one, I think, Rachel, there may not, make sure there's enough, sorry. These are the cash flow and the effects of the options that you have. What I would like to do is propose that we meet again here soon, and that this is what we put on there. We invite Mrs. Mont to come back, and we get this done. So what I'm giving you, and there may be extras, so Chase, you keep them on your end, and I'll pick them up from you when we're done. So what I'm looking for is someplace, first two weeks of April, or we could do something at 6:00 before a regular meeting, but I know how that usually goes. But if you could or want to, I can send something out tomorrow with some dates. You let me know, and we'll get something set up. But I think this is important enough that it, it needs to stand alone on a meeting and get finished, 'cause I think that's the way we've done it all the way up to this, is we've done it on its own. So compare these things that you got here to what you got in this book from her the last time, and then we can come prepared to ask questions and see if we can't finalize this when we're done. And yes, I do have extra copies for anybody who wants copies, and even you, copies of this for anybody's perusal. Does that make sense? I'll send something out, I'll get ahold of her and get some dates, and I'll send something out. All right? With that, I'm finished.
All right. Board reports. Mr. Shiel.
Still with us? Yep. Thank you. So this weekend, the students are, some students are putting on a spring play. The spring play is called Opening Night, and the Opening Night of Opening Night will be on 18th this weekend, and it'll be at 7:00. Solo Ensemble is proud to announce that they have 23 events going on in the state, which is over 50 students.
Wow.
And that, and there, there will be a concert for that tomorrow night, 7:00 as well. The next forensics meet, or competition, is on the 2nd, and all forensic teams members are competing in district, tonight, actually. The math team placed 5th in their last little competition, and we had a perfect score from Andrew Pope. I am jealous. Basketball played in regionals, and the Player of the Year is Simon Lenzmeyer. There's some sports starting up. Track started last Monday. Softball is starting today. Soccer and baseball starts next Monday, and golf starts March 28th. We are all eager to start off the year, start off the season, rather, and so, yeah, go Wildcats.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Thomas, Finance Committee.
We had a meeting on Friday, and I think Andrew's gonna talk about some of the things. We were lucky that day, we had two business managers in attendance, so we felt we got a lot of attention. One of, the main thing that that was talked about began at the, on the first thing on the agenda was to talk about the changing of accounts to bring some of the things that didn't work out last year back into the correct accounts, and to get the fund balance back in line to where it really is. And then we also talked about, those were the budget transfers, and then they'll be published in the paper. Then we heard about the budget process, it's being worked on for the 16, 17 school year, and we talked about the office reorganization a little bit, and we talked quite a bit about the sidewalks that are going to be going up, and I know that there's another committee working on these, but really, we were talking more about paying them. Should we pay in eight installments, or should we pay it off? I think it was about $225,000, was it, Rachel? Totally? Was that it, Andrew?
Uh, no.
The interest rate, if we pay in eight installments, is gonna be about 3%. We're making .3% on our current money, so we kinda talked about those two things. He also, we were also informed by both of the business managers there that they've completed an employee spreadsheet, so we have all the information about our employees on one spreadsheet, so that we know their benefits, we know their salaries, we know all of the things that we need to know that help us make decisions. They talked a little bit about enrollment projections, and we talked a little bit about if we could get, the board could get, when they have time to put together an estimated worksheet for next year, what's estimated enrollment, what they think the levy will, you know, that we always used, usually are used to getting in April for the first time. So those were really kind of the main things that we talked about. Number one being the trans, the budget transfers, and number two being the sidewalks.
All right. Thank you.
I would like to just elaborate a little bit on the sidewalk issue, 'cause I think that's coming up later on. I don't know if that needs to be discussed now, or when that is on the schedule as action item, that we can talk about.
Well, I think my, my point was is to talk about, your, your decision was to look at payment of it. The facilities committee was gonna talk about the easement of it.
About the what?
The easement for it.
Oh, yeah, that, that's not, we didn't talk about that at all.
So really, what we have to look at is the two different options. 10, you can use the 10-year option, where it's about $18,000 in interest, or obviously you have to pay it off all at once, which that's, for cash flow wise, that's probably not the most... The option, I was thinking that would be the best idea, would be to take the 10-year option at 3%, but then if we have extra money, we can pay off, there's no penalty for paying off early, or paying off more than what your principal and interest is. So that's certainly up to you, and, and I guess that, that's a decision that you wanna weigh the interest over the course of it versus, versus the paying it off at once, so...
Well, I think one of the questions that, that came up was, is there a penalty? And the answer to that is no.
Yeah, I found that out, it's no, not to pay it off early. And like I said, it's also, the first payment's probably not gonna be due till, it won't be due until December, so, and these numbers are not accurate. They're ballpark for the costs and everything, but until they get the job, work done, they're not gonna know exactly what the cost is gonna be on it, so. So we do have quite a bit of time before anything's gonna be due, so...
I asked, too, how that, paying off that loan you talked about, Dean, versus paying installment, which is a better deal for us? To use some of our money to pay off the loan, or to use our money to pay upfront on the sidewalk? I don't know.
And I haven't analyzed the two against each other, but I know what you're saying. And I think Andrew is right on to say is, you know, once you, you get done with the school year, you look at the audit, instead of, if you have $20,000 left, instead of putting it in the fund balance, make a payment on this and get, you know, pay it off as you go, and get it done with. And again, your first payment isn't until December, so you've got a little time to decide which way you wanna go. But we, since we have to give them an easement, or we can vote to give it, it was the time to talk about how you wanted to pay for it also.
Yeah, well, we, we talked about that in the meeting, too, and that was also my...
We didn't talk about the easement, though.
No, no, well, we talked about the payment plan, but, but, and, and setting it up so that we had this option. And the only outstanding question was whether or not there was a penalty for paying early. But since there isn't, this provides the most flexibility.
Mr. Deeb, what is the total assessment?
$150,000. $151,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, facilities. Mr. Imperio.
Yeah, let me just touch base on the, on the easement. And this is to provide sidewalks along Lake Park Place from pretty much the intersection of Main Street up to Pinnacle Drive. And to accomplish that, the city requires an easement on our property to, it's a permanent easement, to locate the sidewalk. And this easement would stop probably just past our track area. It would not go up where the practice fields are. At that particular juncture, the sidewalk would be located within the existing right-of-way of the, of Lake Park Place. So it's pretty, it's pretty standard. To, to grant them the easement, this is necessary to, to move forward. Should we fail to approve this, my assumption is they could exercise them in a domain and get it, and...
Right.
So we may as well approve it, and that's our, that's our recommendation. The, the other item is, last week, through a teleconference, we attended a bid opening on the major subcontractors for the high school projects. Those projects primarily are heating, ventilating, and air conditioning related, so the, the two subcontractor contracts will be dealt with on an action item later. Those, in fact, were the low bidders, and the recommendation will be to approve award to those two low bidders. The project came in slightly under the budget that we established at our last meeting. It includes a contingency fund, so we are, we are pretty confident that we can move forward with this. Making these approvals now will allow the contractors to order the necessary equipment, boiler, air handling units, et cetera, that are necessary, so that the project can be completed when school starts in the fall. So...
Question?
Yep. So, I mean, as we all know, with all that experience with, the lowest bid isn't always the best bid, so I just wanna, you're, you're still, you're recommending it after looking at everything?
Let me, let me say again, it, and I didn't say it, it would be the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Policy Committee. Met in the last day of February, and we looked at these two policies, the 133 rule and the 1345.6, and both of those reflect the current law, change in the law, so we're bringing it up to date for filing, for board vacancies. That was a recently passed law, and high school graduation requirements.
And then in that last one, the high school graduation requirement, the only change that you'll see is that it's the addition of the civics test, which under law, you have to do now, so it was just put in there.
Right. Correspondence? We have any? We don't hear that?
No.
No correspondence. All right, action items. Approval of district administrator contract for the 16, 17 school year.
I'll move the board to approve a contract. Ms. Pamela Strike is the new district administrator with a start date of July 1, 2016.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the contract for Mrs. Strike. Any comments? Questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. Imperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
No.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. And that passes, four to one. Approval of professional staff resignation.
You have in your packet a letter of resignation from Ms. Sherri Davis. Sherri is a teacher at the elementary school, and the letter is informing me that I've chosen to resign from my job as a first-grade teacher at Lake Mills Elementary School. I will finish my 2015-16 school year contract and follow, and be sure to follow the necessary protocol for leaving. Please let me know if there's anything additional I need to do. I appreciate the professional development and growth opportunities I have received from the district, and in particular, particular to you, Mr. Sanders, it was written to me. Your mentoring support has encouraged me, and I hope that we will continue our relationship as I move forward in my career. I wish you and the Lake Mills School District continued growth and success in the future. Sincerely, Sherri Davis.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the resignation of Ms. Sherri Davis, and thank her for her service to the children, staff, and community of Lake Mills.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resignation. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Imperio.
Aye.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of letter of assignment change for her secretarial position.
That would be, again, the position that I talked about with the addition of the summer school and moving that forward. And I know that in your one handout, it talked about financially what that difference would be from where she is now at a 10-month contract to a 12-month contract.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve a full-time, 12-month secretarial contract for Ms. Andrea Redham Phillipsen for the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Comments?
I should've said "letter of assignment."
Oh.
When I typed it, not "contract."
Letter of assignment, not, not contract.
Um, what do you...
It should be a letter of assignment, because there are...
Okay, it says "letter of assignment" under that, but it's not...
Right, yep, I typed it wrong.
In the motion, it's not.
In the motion, it was typed wrong.
Do I need to amend the motion?
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is, I move the board, the, the board to approve full-time, 12-month secretarial... assignment.
Letter of assignment.
Letter of assignment.
Letter of assignment. For Andrea. Okay, and that's been seconded, so any question, comment on that? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff retirement.
I have one letter of retirement this month. It says, Dear Dean, I want to personally thank the Lake Mills School District for allowing me to be a part of a wonderful school system for the past 20 years. I have reached the part of my life where I find I am ready to retire to pursue other interests. It will be bittersweet to leave because of all the fine people that make our school district great. I will miss many aspects of my job, but do not want to lose out on benefits either. My employment will end in the end, at the end of the, at the end of the school year on June 10, 2016. However, I will honor my commitment to teaching summer school this year, as the office needed to know by January 31, 2016. I am proud to have been a part of a cutting-edge school for so many years. Sincerely, Linda Griffey.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the request for retirement from Miss Linda Griffey at the end of summer school session in the 2015-16 school year, and thank her for her service to the student, staff, parents, community, and school district of Lake Mills.
Second.
I'm going to second it. Questions on that, comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of sidewalk easement.
I think Mr. DiImperio did a very nice job of explaining it. You're just giving them the right to build that sidewalk all the way up there.
I'll move the board to approve the easement with the City of Lake Mills for a sidewalk to be placed on district property on East Park, East Lake Park Place.
Second.
Second, say that real fast.
Can't, can't do it.
Any comments on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of peer educator letter of assignments.
You have a write-up in your packet to additional .5 special education peer educator due to the needs of a student, and so we're, we're asking you to approve a letter of assignment for Miss Jennifer E. Banks for this position.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve a letter of assignment for Miss Jennifer E. Banks as peer educator for the district for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
I'm going to second and approve the letter of assignment. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. High school volleyball trip.
You in your packet, you have a request from the volleyball coach to take their team, they play in a tournament in the Dells, and they, it's probably one of the first ones, and it's a, they would like to stay overnight, and probably as a team bonding. I think we've done that once before, I think last year we did that, and so they're asking for you to let them do that again.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve a high school girls' volleyball overnight trip to Wisconsin Dells on August 25, 26, 2016. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
I'm going to second it to approve the girls' volleyball trip. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of subcontractors for high school remodeling project.
I think you have that, the sheet in your, in your packet, Mr. DiImperio, again, was able to explain this.
I move the board to approve the Myron Corporation entering into contracts with the following companies to complete the scope of work that is needed to finish the summer high school project, HVAC work, Illingsworth Kilgus Mechanical of West Alice, and for the electrical work, Midwest Electric of Watertown.
Second.
I'm going to second and approve the, the summer work, the high school. Any questions on that?
The one thing I neglected to say during my brief report was that an element of this project is going to be subject, or the availability of a grant from the Focus on Energy. We won't know exactly what that's going to be until the, until the work has been completed. It may not be a huge amount, but it may be, I think, on the order of maybe $10,000 or so. So that'll be coming back to us at, at the completion of the project.
Nice.
It should also be said that the air handling will be greatly improved.
Yes, it will.
Number one, and number two, we should save quite a bit of money with new boilers.
Correct.
Will the existing boiler go for, like, scrap?
Yes, that's part of the.
You know what I mean?
Part of the contract was that they had to remove it and scrap it. You have to recycle it.
Recycle it? Awesome.
You have to cut it up to get it out of there. Yeah, they will.
Any other comments, questions on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of resolution to authorize short-term borrowing.
Again, you heard from Mr. Deeb that this, this is just, the Bank of Lake Mills, we were doing it with, we've approved one earlier in the year, they needed some changes after it would have been looked at, so again, we ask that you approve it again, and it would have the changes in it that they had asked for. We have had our people look at it, it's nothing that's, you know, out of the ordinary.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the following resolution, be it resolved by the Lake Mills Area School District School Board, that pursuant to the provision of Section 67.128A1 and 8A Wisconsin statutes, the Lake Mills Area School District Board shall authorize a short-term line of credit with the Bank of Lake Mills pursuant to the above law as per the provisions set up in the complete resolution document. The entire resolution will be part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
I'm going to second and approve short-term borrowing. Questions, comments? It's pretty straightforward. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts.
We have four gifts this month. One is from the Moravian Church. Their foundation has given the district $3,000 towards the backpack program. Crystal Farms Refrigeration Distribution Company gave a generous donation of cheese sticks and cheese trays for the seniors, and them for, when we had senior exhibitions, they donated some food for, for that, and their product exceeded at least $200. The Kelly Williamson Company gave a generous donation of $500 from the ExxonMobil 2015 Educational Alliance Math and Science Grant Program to the high school. And lastly, Miss Pam Sherri, for her donations of approximately $230 in decoration for the snow coming dance that we had in the winter, which I know was a success, and I'm looking at Chase, he's shaking his head, yes, but this is a lady who donated all of the decorations, bought them and donated them, so. With that, going back to the first one, just so you know, we are at 56 students right now that we're sending home products every weekend. With this donation, I think we will try to continue past spring break. To this point, the district has put out very little money. It's costing the district about $4 a week per, per child, which is like $300 a week. So with this, I believe that we can finish out the school year. We did do a survey of the parents to ask them if it was, you know, important or not. I think it was interesting, and I got a letter from one of the teachers at the elementary that said, one of the young men had lost his backpack, and it had blown away from him as he got off the bus, and he was so sad, because he said to the teacher, if I don't have that, I don't have any food at my dad's place this weekend. So it's making an impact. That one made an impact on me when I read it, too, so.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the following gifts and thank the donors for their generous donation to our school system. $3,000 from the Moravian Church of Lake Mills to the backpack program, $200 donation of cheese sticks and cheese trays from Crystal Farms Refrigeration Distribution of Lake Mills to the high school for senior exhibitions, $500 from the Kelly Williamson Company of Rockford from the ExxonMobil 2015 Educational Alliance Math and Science Grant Program to the high school, and $230 from Miss Pam Sherri to the Lake Mills High School for decorations for the snow coming dance.
Second.
I'm going to second it to approve the gifts. Questions? Roll call, please.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. DiImperio.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. April Board Agenda Items.
We, I have so far, art and science curriculum will be here, policy second reading, budget transfers, we will invite the Cape people to come. We can talk about the sidewalk payment, I don't know that we really have to at this point in time. And then, again, setting up a OPEB meeting for, you know, when Miss Mont can come to move that forward. I don't, help me if there are other things.
We may have some information on the land sale question.
Yeah, I hope so. And if there are any, if there are any non-renewals for the year, for next year, you have to do the preliminary at your April meeting. At this time, I do not see any.
Okay. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to second it. Now, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.